Thank you, Commissioner. What's the about someone?
Six oh one.
Six oh one, right. Uh, Sam, question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment, roll call time.
Commissioner Carberry, here. Commissioner Connell.
Here.
Commissioner Tenac is excused. Commissioner Burisi. Commissioner Layton, here. Commissioner Irons is excused and Commissioner Jones is excused.
I might just say that Sam is on a fire, so just keep in mind his thoughts. And all the rest of the firefighters out there, stop right now.
No, not easy work.
Yeah.
And it's the beginning of the season.
It is absolutely the beginning, yeah. Sam just got back from being down in Malheur County, he stopped by, picked up the packet and figured he'd be here and I get an email late this afternoon, I'm at Battle Mountain, so. Yeah.
Good times. All right, uh, did anyone get a chance to read the minutes? Is there any issue or? Couldn't make, uh? Have a motion to accept if anyone is satisfied?
I will. We have a motion to accept three minutes.
A second?
Motion in a second.
We actually had a mistake in the minutes.
Oh, that's right, we, we, uh, in the people in, in the attendance line, we missed you, Commissioner Layton. But you made several motions during the meeting, so we need to, we do actually need to, so if, if somebody would mind, Mike, would you mind amending your motion to?
Yeah, I'd like to amend that.
Accommodate that change?
To accommodate for her presence at the beginning of the meeting.
And Jamie, are you okay if you amend your second?
I do.
Okay.
That's perfect. Yeah, she's in the voice.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
So motion to, uh, to the minutes with the single amendment, uh, adding Commissioner Layton and amendment second. And a vote, okay?
Commissioner Layton?
Yes.
Commissioner Carberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Connell?
Yes.
Commissioner Burisi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, there are several public hearings to get through, uh, a lot of contents, so we're gonna try and pop right through these without a lot of course of time. Uh, do you, does that have anything before I jump into these public hearings?
The only thing staff would do before you jump into the public hearings was, would be to take just a moment and introduce Stephanie Case, who is our new principal planner, she started on Monday. Um, she comes to us with nearly ten years of planning experience with the, um, with Moro County. Um, the other thing that we haven't talked a lot about in this forum here is several months ago, the Gillum County Planning Director was. In Gillum County, and, um. They reached out because we do. Program for Gillum County, so they reached out, I have an, I've had, I've had a relationship of one kind or another with Gillum County for several years. Um, so they reached out, um, between already working with the city on the building side and then, um, some, some knowledge of who I was. And asked if we would be interested in, um, providing them planning services, so we started that conversation, um, the conversation was going really well. Um, and then they had their whole recall over there, and it, it, it just kind of put a bump in the road, it, it kind of slowed things down a bit, um, but we went ahead and posted the position. Um, hired, uh, Stephanie about a month ago, Monday was her first day, and, uh, yesterday. We actually went to, Stephanie and I attended the Gillum County Court Meeting, um, and they approved the IGA, um, we received, um, their signature today, we signed it on our end and sent it back, so. Um. Next step is the, for Stephanie and I to go over and meet with them and figure out just what it is we've gotten ourselves into, providing planning services for Gillum County, but it, it does provide us another planning staff. Um, Stephanie has some, some experience with writing code and, uh, she would work together on a, a billable lands inventory and housing needs analysis back with Moro County. Um, she certainly understands the county side of things to be able to pick up and do, um, the work under that IGA, so anyway, I just ask you to welcome her and I'm excited to have her on board. Thank you.
Well.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, let's shoot right in. Uh, we'll start with the public hearing on condition is permit CUP two four dash zero 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 two. Uh, it's called order. The City of Boardman is the owner and applicant is to improve barbed wire fencing at several city one facilities, probably the city hall, city water, uh, water tower, city shop along Marine Drive and city's collective wells. Showing the respective properties as commercial residential, multifamily and open space, criteria for approval was found in Boardman's Code, check four point four condition please permits, being processed at type three decision. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows, starting with staff report, then public testimony in the following order in, by the applicant. Any testimony supporting the application, any testimony opposing the application, any mutual testimony, and then if any, uh, an act of the offense involved. Then we will close the public testimony, after the record is closed with testimony, no other testimony will be heard from anyone unless the planning commission has a specific question, the planning commission may ask questions of staff. After which, planning commission will discuss the matter and make a decision. The planning commission may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is continuing, this will be the only notice of that time and date you will receive. Excuse me, testimony, if you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the associate planner, I will recognize those people wishing to speak. Any questions should be addressed through me, please state both your name and address for the record on the podium or if you're online, as the hearing is being reported. Just keep testimony concise to the point, testimony should be on the actual consideration and address the substantial criteria. The criteria that apply to the decision are listed in the staff report, testimony on that issue will be rejected and not considered by the planning commission. Failure to raise an issue in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission and the parties to be able to respond to the issue for pivots and appeals, land use board appeals based on that issue. Similarly, failure to raise a const, uh, raise constitutional or other issue regarding any conditions of approval in sufficient detail to allow the planning to respond to the issue, the pivots of lawsuit in circuit court on that basis. Now, I ask members of the planning commission to disclose any exportee contacts, bias or conflicts of interest, please indicate the nature and extent of the exportee contact bias or conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Hearing done, does anyone in the audience wish to challenge a planning commissioners impartiality? Hearing done. Uh, please wish to confirm, might be fifth step.
Actually, Nancy's gonna do this one tonight, and I want to share that Walt Craig is here this evening, he is the public works director and is also staff for this particular action. Uh, cause the barbed wire is predominantly in his facilities.
Thank you, Commissioner Burisi. So the request we have before you today is for existing barbed wire on top of fences located, um, properties that are either owned or leased by the City of Boardman. And it is unclear if the city previously submitted an application and or received. A conditional use permit for any of these, which is the reason why for the request today. The properties identified in this request are zone, commercial and open space. Although the request is for the barbed wire on top of the fences, the fences meet the vision clearance and material requirements. The property known as city hall currently has a fence, barbed wire and razor wire due to the delicate nature of information being stored inside of the Sallyport. The transportation of inmates and movement of personnel. The property known as city water tower currently has a fence. And barbed wire for security of the water tower and to ensure public safety being at such close proximity to Riverside Junior High School. The property known as city shop currently has a fence and barbed wire. It houses heavy machinery for the public works department and. And access to machinery, equipment and other items should be limited to public works employees. There are no conditions of approval for this request, and the city recommends approval of this request. Does anybody have any questions?
Could not think of a single question, actually.
So pretty much, you know, they're there. We're unsure if they were not done through the process which they should have been done, and to ensure that they are, here we are today. Bringing these requests and just kind of bundled everything up for you guys and made it nice and easy. But as easy as we could.
But a pretty paintball on it.
Yeah.
Um, some of the fences do predate the current development code, um, that would be the case for the water tower and probably the city shop. However, the city shop is being expanded and that, that fencing is actually being expanded and being, there's more going in. Um, but regardless of that, um, we did have a code enforcement complaint. Uh, we were doing enforcement on barbed wire, and they were like, well, you have barbed wire, is yours properly permitted, and when Brandon asked the question, I. Couldn't answer it, and the bit of looking that we did, we couldn't find anything, um. Couldn't find anything that gave us a clear answer, so we thought the best approach would be just to. Do it all. And then we can say, yes, it's been properly evaluated and we have the permit that we need.
Do you have a question? Does this, would this include future expansions we go into on city property?
No, it wouldn't.
Just those facilities?
So the facilities as they are today, so let's just say, um, city hall, we just grow so much and we expand. Um, on that side and we either grow the Sallyport or, or, or move it. Um, or do something else and have another area that spans, maybe, maybe at some point in time, there's a decision to, um, fence. Stack parking, I, I, I don't see a reason for that, but let's just say that would happen. That would be subject to, not only would that expansion be subject to a review process, but if there was a fence, um. The fence would require a fence permit and the barbed wire, if on top of it, would require the conditional use permit.
And a variance.
Variance only if it was over the height. So, so yeah, the difference between the conditional use permit for the barbed wire. And what we did for the use facility, that was a variance because we were varying the height, so it's, it's kind of apples and complex. I mean, we've got a barbed wire issue and we've got a height issue, they're both fence issues, but they're kind of different, um, parts of the fence.
But we have, we have a clear lane as to how to either approve it or disapprove it, or say, yeah, you could do it or you can't.
Right.
Now.
Yep, in both cases, yeah.
Whether it's the city or others.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. Yep.
Uh, was there any questions for staff? Was there any correspondence on this?
There was, uh, we received. Nancy received, go, go ahead.
An email, received an email. From, uh, I think an adjoining landowner that said he didn't want further. A barbed wire fencing, said you guys already have enough, and then I replied and shared the findings of fact. And shared that we weren't looking to, um, add more barbed wire fencing throughout the facilities, but were actually. Sending this request for what was already currently there, and after that, we haven't received any sort of response.
No response from him and no other authority? I'm not sure which one, I'm not sure.
I believe he replied to the, uh. Might have replied to a few of them, but the one that he was most focused on was the city tower, the water tower. Water tower.
Yeah, I mean, particular structure and. Makes sense, awesome, so is the water tower, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Even more.
Opportunity.
Yeah, the kids.
Yeah.
Mark.
Some adults.
Yeah, there is that scene in Sweet Home Alabama where they're sitting on top of the water power, water tower, um, drinking beer and dropping their bottles into the, the trash can bottles, yeah.
All right, uh, well. Uh. Hey, is there any additional testimony to add to the record?
Yes, no, and the city is the applicant, and so, uh, we've kind of made our, yeah, done our piece, so.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone that, uh, additionally that was speaking favorably of the application? Is there just one person online?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm saying, we're looking at you. Other guests in the audience. Unless Karen, you know, like, have comments to give. Okay, uh, do you want to speak against the application? Any neutral testimony? Okay. Uh, well, the public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Uh, questions, additional questions that wasn't answered by staff? Uh, discussion time. That my thoughts.
I mean, it makes sense.
Pretending a very good structure, law enforcement.
Yeah, right, and that is, anybody, when it comes to the future, now we got natural policies, so it's very fair.
And you should, you should.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, it's been, all, it's all been there, long lived here, so, yeah. All but that, except for this back here, that one, still the old one, but.
But again, that's for law enforcement.
Well, that's here, they're better.
Respect. No. And even in the future, when, if something really built or, that needed the same kind of protection as the water tower or law enforcement, then. That's why we got this, so we can be able to.
No.
Prove it as well.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Right, well, we are considering a second water tower in town, um, way to the south. Um, and it would either be fenced as a facility or, or have some level of protection on it, that would be, you know, anti-climb or, so. Yeah, it's just a matter of protecting that infrastructure.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, uh. I look for a, a commissioner to present a motion to either approve as presented or then amendments if you so shall.
I move to approve that. Conditional use permit CUP two four dash zero 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 two, I present.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have motion to approve, uh, condition use permit, uh, as presented and seconded. We do all.
Yes. Commissioner Layton?
Yes.
Commissioner Carberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Connell?
Yes.
Commissioner Burisi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Next public hearing. Public hearing on transportation system plan or TSP amendment LND two four dash zero 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 four is called to order.
Okay, so. I did something today on my office, can I borrow one of your guys' findings from over there?
Yeah, none of them redefine all the same rules apply.
Uh, actually, they're a little bit different, this one is a legislative hearing, um, but once you do this one, it'll be the same.
Through that bridge ended, yeah.
I, I caught you, yeah.
Okay, this is, uh, this request is to adopt the. Number one, Moro County, Umatilla County Transit Development Strategy. Uh. Circuit two thousand and eighteen, is that what that is?
Okay.
Uh, number two, the Hermiston Boardman Connector slash Boardman for more circular. Uh, from twenty twenty one, and number three, Moro County According Human Services Transportation Plan, number two. All in support of pending object to the city Boardman TSP to provide input and guidance study upon transit. Public transportation portion, as well as to assist in setting standards for development of transit support systems provided by the loop and kayak within the city. This is the first of at least two public hearings with a final hearing before the city council. The public hearing will be conducted as follows, starting with staff report and then testimony from the applicants, testimony in support of the application, testimony opposing the application. And neutral testimony, and then we'll hear rebuttals after, if any. After, we will close the public testimony, after the record is closed for testimony, no testimony will be heard from anyone unless the planning commission has a specific question. The planning commission may ask questions of staff, after which, planning commission will discuss the matter and decision, planning commission may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. Matter continues, this will be the only notice of that time and date you will receive. If anyone wishes to speak, please fill out a testimony form, submit it to the associate planner, I will organize it, if you want to speak, let me talk to you guys through me, please state both your names and addresses for the record on the podium. Or online, as the hearing is being reported, please keep testimony concise to the point. Testimony should be on the action under consideration to address the substantial criteria. The criteria that apply to the decision are listed in the staff reports. Failure to raise an issue in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission and parties to be able to respond to the issue, pivots in the field of land use board of appeals based on the issue. Similarly, failure to raise a constitutional or other issue, uh, issues regarding any conditions of approval in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission to respond to the issue, give us a lawsuit in circuit court on that basis. Then I ask members of the planning commission to disclose any exportee contacts, bias or conflicts of interest, please indicate the nature and extent of the exportee contact bias or conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge a planning commissioners impartiality? Uh, staff report. Nancy? Over to this one, stay back and forth.
It'd be me.
Getting me on my toes.
It'd be me, the next week, oh, okay, next week, me, okay. So thanks for, um, identifying the request, um, this is really some groundwork, um, as we move towards updating our TSP. Uh, we should have the notice to proceed on that project here in the next week, I'm hoping, um, the checks been cut and we should be hearing back from ODOT shortly. The consultant has been selected and they're just waiting to get started. Um, that's gonna be a big project, it's gonna take us probably fifteen to eighteen months to work our way through that. Um. And our current TSP is, uh, twenty-three years old, so, um, well, well beyond the time, um, to do that. Uh, and with the growth that has happened in Boardman between two thousand and one and twenty twenty-four, uh, we're seeing a lot of, of impacts. Um, I mean, the conversation we've been having about Boardman Avenue and Main, North Main Street, um, we're getting ready to do the design on South Main Street, the second action we're gonna do tonight is another kind of. Pseudo-transportation action, so, uh, there's just a lot going on, and I think this is the start. The, the focus with this particular action is really around transit. The current TSP did not envision transit, it talks briefly about the fact that Grenham stops in Boardman, which it doesn't do anymore, it now stops in Stanfield. Um, and it, it recognizes that there is a, um. A county special transportation program, um, which has been in place for many years, but in the year since two thousand and one, they've received, um, a grant to do, um. Uh, services for veterans, um, they've expanded significantly what they're doing, the state, um, adopted a, a tax that comes back to jurisdictions and communities for transit support. So there's just been a lot that has happened, um, a lot of that in the last six or eight years, um, but certainly over the past twenty years, and what used to be. Moro County Special Transportation is now the Loop, and it's an actual transit department in a county. And most of you have probably seen the Loop buses driving around town, they've gone from cars and vans to actual buses. Um, and they are working to establish a fixed route system, not only within Boardman, um, to capture people who need to get to different places in town. But connecting those folks to work in the Port of Moro area, and then they have routes that go and, and hit the three south county communities and come up and connect to Boardman. Sadly, the community that's not really been addressed in this yet is Irrigan. And I do think that is forthcoming, um. But. It's a coordination between Moro County, to some degree Umatilla County, and then the Confederate Tribes of the Umatilla Indian Reservation, as they offer the services that we all see, the kayak buses out there. So this is really about laying the groundwork, because that's. Conversation, um, with, um. With the county. To put, um. Bus stops in town. And we don't have a standard by which we would even build a bus stop or require a bus stop to be built, you know, how much space do you need? Um, we know that we're having some conflicts with buses stopping for, uh, you know, to pick up or let off, and, and, and you don't establish. System without establishing stops, and whether there's a person there or not, you make the stop, it's, it's just, it's just what a fixed route system does. And so, they pull over to make the stop and the cars behind them aren't, aren't aware yet or not attuned to the fact that we have a bus in town. Um, and so it can create some conflict, so we need to figure out how we get bus stop signs out there, and then really, what does that mean in the long run? What makes, what constitutes a bus stop, should there be a, should there be a bench, should there be, um, a, a weather protection, should there be a garbage can so that people don't throw their trash on the ground? I mean, there's just a lot of things to consider and, and what that kind of means to the community and how, how it, how it grows, so we have no standards for those things. Um, so this is really about kind of laying that groundwork. So the three plans that I put in front of you, that we want to adopt as guidance and, and understand their guidance, these, these are not regulatory documents. Um, and they don't read as regulatory documents, they really are guidance. So that when our, our consultant comes on board and starts doing work on the TSP, we can say, look, relative to transit, this is what we know, this is the information we have, we've adopted it. Um, the, the planning commission, the council reviewed these, um, we've all come to agreement that these are at least base level. Um, this is base level information that we can build on to be able to understand what transit might look like in Boardman. Um, the oldest document is from two thousand and eighteen, I was actually at the county when this one was, was drafted, it was a really interesting project. Um, it was a three-way, well, actually, it was technically a four-way project, by the way, now ODOT. It was ODOT, Moro County, Umatilla County, the Confederate Tribes of Umatilla, and then at the time, we also included, um, Milton Free Water was part of the Milton Free Water Wallowalla MPO, which stands for. Something. It's a metropolitan, it's a metropolitan designation based on the size of Milton Free Water and Wallowalla together. And they ended up not really being included in the final product. Um, because the focus really wasn't Milton Free Water and Wallowalla, that really wasn't any over that way, so it just didn't really participate very fully. And it really ended up kind of being the two counties, the tribes and ODOT. It's a really interesting document, and I would say that an awful lot in that document really hasn't changed. Um, I think the premise of that is still the same, we still have less people living in Boardman than people working at the Port of Moro. I think Moro County and the City of Boardman, um, the other communities in Moro County are still trying to figure out how we grow our population so that we can actually feed the workforce rather than having the commute patterns that we have. We have more people commute into the Port of Moro, um, than commute out, but it's really.
Excuse me, you mean businesses that are in the Port of Moro, not Port of Moro proper, as a, as a.
Right, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the whole, the businesses in the port, the commute, the commute into the Port of Moro businesses is large.
Yeah.
And what's really interesting is that the number of people who live in Boardman and actually commute out of town, and I don't mean out of town to the Port of Moro businesses, I mean literally, out of town, is pretty significant too. So that's kind of what we saw in that two thousand and eighteen study, very, very interesting, um, data, and I don't think it has. It's probably changed some, but not so significantly that it would be, um, detrimental as a, as a background document. The two thousand and one document, um. Was the county's attempt to kind of solidify routes, um, and again, this was a, a multi-county effort, it was kind of this whole regional transportation look, so. It, it's a, it's a document that talks about Hermiston and Boardman Connector, and then the Boardman and Port of Moro Circular. I think we're still working on getting to that Hermiston Boardman Connector, there was talk about running. I, I can't walk and shoot gun at the same time, so one would be going this way, a bus would be going this way. And then the other bus would be going this way, and I can't do those at the same time, and what I'm saying is that's connecting Boardman, Irrigan, Umatilla. To Hermiston and then, and then Hermiston to Echo, to Echo Stanfield, and then around, so it's basically a seven thirty. Three ninety-five. Three ninety-five. I eighty-four route, is kind of what it, what it ends up looking at, and you're doing it one way on the hour, or two hours, or whatever, and then you're doing it the other way. So I can, I can get the bus going this direction to go from Boardman to Umatilla. And then I can get the bus going the other way to get from Umatilla back to Boardman, or, or wherever I may be going. So those are the concepts that they were trying to find in two thousand and one, and again. It's not a perfect document either, and between, and that was written during the, the, during COVID. And so there are probably some assumptions that we would look at differently if we were to redo that today. And the county probably needs to redo that at some point in time, to continue to refine the routes, and to continue to have good input into that. The two thousand and twenty-two document is the Morale County Coordinated Human Services Transportation Plan, and that is a mouthful. What that really is, is a document that the county is required to do. Under the funding structures that they have for their special transportation money and, and other, other funds as well. But it's a really good document relative to the demographics that are in Morale County that the programs are serving. And that's what it's looking at, it's looking at what kind of population are we serving, and they look at the elderly, the disabled. Um, uh, people in poverty, I mean, there's about eight different categories of folks that they look at in that particular plan. And it's, it really helps them kind of drive what kind of services they need, and, and how they would deliver those. So, those are really the background documents, they're not our documents, we're adopting, we're adopting them as guidance, we have no. Um, ability to change those documents, we're just simply adopting them. Um, and to guide the discussion that we'll be having as we update the T S P. Around transit, so that's the request, and I, that's kind of a summary of what those documents are, and, and the reasons behind it. Um, the staff report really just addresses the, the reasons why. Um, because these are being adopted as guidance. Um, when it gets in front of the city council and may be the final adoption. We won't be adopting them by ordinance, we'll be adopting them by resolution, and that's the difference between a regulatory document. And a guidance document, and that's probably getting into more weeds than you guys are interested in. Have an interest in that kind of stuff as well. So. Happy to answer. But because we're staff, and we're also the applicant, that's kind of also the applicant's testimony as well.
Well, on a simple level, the, the, the uh questions in regards to the bus stops and the, uh. How, how, I guess, not how it works so much, but Irrigan has a perfect example, just finished over there, right? They, with their little stop, and I'm assuming they use the loop, or that's what the loop is for, or I mean, that's what the stop's for, is the loop, or the other one?
Actually, in Irrigan, it's kayak that's coming to Irrigan. So, yeah, and they moved that stop several times.
Yeah, they put it now with the new sidewalks right there, the corner of the. Bakes, what used to be bakes.
Yep, right, right, rusty wagon or rusty trucker. But yeah, the rusty, but the rusty, I don't know.
Bakes.
Yeah, yeah, so, but that stop used to be closer to City Hall. Um, and then it moved closer to the county building, and now it's over there, um, off, just off the highway, so that stop has moved several times. And I think that's, that's, that's the. That's the piece that we want to kind of, we want to work out some kinks before we do anything permanent.
Right.
Because we don't want to be, you know. Putting cement, but, you know, we don't want to be cementing a bench into the ground, or, or doing other kind of improvements, and go, oops, that's not really the best space for the stop. And, and then moving the stop, so, we want, and we also want a really good standard for what our stops might look like, but yeah.
I think they probably got it right where they put it this time, because it stays on the main artery through town, and they don't have to go. You know, over here, over there, they can just keep their route straight, whatever, everybody knows it's there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is there a requirement for parking, a parking like a one or two cars, like, say, I. I can't walk from here to there, but I can drive, get out of my car, and you can take me to Hermiston.
Parking.
This is gonna have a. Like a.
I think that's a really good issue Karen to bring up when we're working on the T S P and we're deciding how to do all of this stuff. Yeah, it's a good question, it's a little premature. Yeah, yeah.
But don't they already have a ban service?
No, they. They do still do the door-to-door, I mean, so you can still call and get the door-to-door service. But if you wanted.
You're talking about?
No.
No, he's talking about, he's talking about parking.
Oh, so he, so means to get close to the bus stop, like get on.
Parking ride, parking ride.
Like a parking.
Yeah, the parking rides, like they happen in everywhere. They're parking lots, so.
Put a bus stop next to a parking spot.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Right.
Exactly.
Yep. All good questions.
It's a random stream.
To the bus.
Yeah, in Vancouver anyway.
So if I understand.
Used to serve it, and they charge more.
Yeah, yeah.
Then what we're doing is literally the very groundwork, because there hasn't been. Anything, so we're just starting, and. This is going to allow us just to get started. This is data collection for input to the T S P update, yeah.
Well, is this something that the city has to give a city land in order for a bus stop? Or, who is, who is gonna have to provide the finances of it?
So, good question, um, it's not our program, we won't be funding it. So we'll be looking at now, will the bus stops be in right away, most likely. So as we work to decide, like, we know we're gonna be in this, we're, we're entering into the process right now, where we. We're gonna start designing the rebuild of South Main. And we know there's probably at least two bus stops on South Main. So the question is, is what's the safest way to build a bus stop? Probably a bus, a, a bump in, not a bump out, but a bump in. You know, and have it say bus stop. So is the city kind of contributing some right away to that process, yes. If we were to design parking along South Main Street, and I don't know, I don't know what the final design is gonna be, so I don't know if there will be on-street parking or not. But let's just say there is, this would have the potential of taking some parking spaces out to be dedicated for a. Bus stop, for a place for a bus to pull over, that would be the city's kind of contribution to the program. But it is a county program, and so when we start talking about bus stop amenities. That's gonna be predominantly a county, it, it's a county program, it's gonna be, we're gonna look to them to make those improvements. As part of their transit program.
After we say you can do it here.
Yep.
And here.
And right, right.
Over here.
Right, and there would be, we're doing that permitting process with them right now, they, they've got a number of stops, I mean, they're kind of, they're kind of doing the work now. Um, and we need to get with them, we've had a couple of meetings, and they've got kind of the current finalized bus route stop map. And they're ready to sit down for us to kind of work with them and go through that permitting process and say, yep. Yep, you can put the bus stop here, and yes, we'll allow you to install that bus stop sign in the right away. So we are permitting those, those locations, and we're permitting them to put those signs, and at this point in time. We know it's still um tentative enough, we're not gonna ask for any amenities, and we don't have a standard by which to ask for those amenities yet. But they know we're gonna ask, they know we're gonna ask for those. So.
So if there's a turnout lane for a bus, can any bus use it, or is it strictly for the. Uh, for the loop and the kayak, because I mean. If they're doing one on South Main, you know, the school bus goes over there, now can they use it as well?
They don't have to, they have red lights. They have blinking lights, everybody has to stop.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, could they, yes, um, it will be signed, it will have the bus stop number on it. For the loop route that, that, that stop is assigned to. Um, but could the bus stop, you, or could the school? Yeah.
But it's not a normal stop for a school bus.
It probably is not gonna be in the same location as a school bus stop would be. Um, and I think the big difference is that, that the, the loop buses or the kayak buses don't have the ability to turn the flashing lights on and stop the traffic behind them. It's a different.
And legal.
It's a different requirement.
And the legal behind that.
Right, right.
That stops everybody from.
I'm just saying that because the school bus that stops. By the fire wash, and lets out all those kids, there's a lot of kids there, there's a lot of traffic there, so if they could pull off the road even farther. To protect those children from all the cars. You know, I see, I see it being a good thing for that, for that trailer area, because those kids aren't, you know, running in potentially in the road.
Right.
I wouldn't ask them to stop on Main anyway.
They do though.
Why can't you, they pull in right there and drop them off inside.
Into that gravel parking lot, but sometimes they park right on the road.
Oh, they got.
Or they used to park right on the road.
Right, they gotta have a standard.
Actually, it depends on who's driving the bus back, yes.
Yeah, they got.
If it's the designated area, that's just, you know, a little more protection for the children.
Yeah, but that, yeah, we separate from this.
Well, and remember that we're in the process of building a road over there, and you know, my apologies to all the businesses that are, are dealing with the, the work on southeast Maine. And, and, or southeast front and, and first. But when that's done, that will provide a loop that we're hoping that the transit buses can take advantage of. To eliminate the stops on Main, it could also provide an opportunity for school buses to get on the loop. And get off of Main. So, um, I think as we build the loops and we build these external. Other transportation routes for, for cars and bikes and pets. And buses, that maybe we can get buses off the most traveled route. And maybe, and so that those conflicts or stop are happening on a lesser traveled road. So these are all the kinds of things that we're talking about, you guys are asking all the right questions, yeah.
No, school buses, they, they need to stop in the lane of traffic, because they stop both lanes.
Right.
People over, they're not gonna stop the traffic. So they want them stopped in the lane of traffic, so it stops all the cars so they can pass the road.
But if they could be off the main.
One thing is.
Same, getting through, through town, that'd be better.
Be better, but if they're gonna stop on Main Street, they're better off stopping in the lane and stopping on the traffic, because then you have kids running across the road with traffic.
Right.
Good point.
And just so you know, every time I drive by southeast front, I'm very happy that. It needed it.
It did need it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Here, sorry. Uh, was there anything else to share with that? Uh, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application? If we had someone join online or who left.
Who's driving his car, so, they left, just wasn't.
Uh, is there anyone who wishes to speak against the application? Okay, any neutral testimony? When, yeah, when, just a quick question, when you said that we have no say in. Where, was you said we had no say in a bit ago? Um, what is, what does that mean, we don't get to tell them what the routes are, or how, how we jive with Umatilla County or.
The things we, the three documents that we're adopting. Are adopted, have been adopted by Morale County, we can't change those documents, we're just simply adopting them as is, yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And the route set was, uh, like, um, future escape was, uh. Tweaked term by a committee, I think I wrote there, wasn't it, the, the proposed committee, like a government. Um.
Are you talking about in the one about the circular and the, in that, in that document?
Yeah, like proposed kayak routes.
Right, so, so actually Karen sits on the, the loop committee. Um, and that committee has about nine people on it, if I remember right, um, Erin and Irrigan. There's a couple of folks from South County, number of staff that, um, sit on it, uh, Stephanie in her previous role at the county participated in that. Um, so. That's the group that will continue to guide kind of what kayak, or not kayak, what, um, Morale County Transportation. That's going forward, yeah.
Okay, uh, well, no rebuttal, we do this, I think speak to, so we will close the. Oh, does one question us here? Uh, questions? For the staff. Any additional questions that are interested?
I just, I had a personal conversation, so I felt, if I didn't have that, I would have been quick.
Okay, uh. I would entertain a motion, uh, if someone either wants to. Recommend the T S P amendment. Uh, whether they have any proposed changes or to deny recognition.
I would recommend T S P amendment, um, L N D twenty-four, five zero four, as presented to the planning commission.
I'll say it counts.
Okay, so there's a. So, Mike is moving, or Commissioner Kyle is moving to recommend T S P amendment, L N D two four dash zeros, or there's a, or as presented.
Yeah, as, as it says, because nothing, there was no changes, right, I mean, there was nothing we needed, we didn't have any discussion about anything.
Yes, it's just corrected.
Yeah, uh, yeah, well, because I'm not on city council, so.
But we're, you're recommending it.
Presented to them, okay, sorry, sorry, yeah, as presented to city council, I thought this was just an example, but you all just. Sorry about that, as presented to city council.
Yes, I'll say.
Okay, and that was, you're good with that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion, we have a second to. Uh, recommend the T S P amendment as presented to council. We vote.
Yes. So, Christian or Layton?
Yes.
Christian or Carberry?
Yes.
Christian or Ponder?
Yes.
Commission Chair Gracie?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, I would say this time you can probably abbreviate, there's two or three questions that probably need to ask.
The only question I had is what happened to, um, the L N D two four dash six? If there's four, five, and seven. And this one?
No, it, it probably got assigned somewhere, it was probably a different action.
Uh.
So the numbers get assigned to different things, so.
It's not in here though, right?
No.
Okay. Okay. The public hearing on downtown development plan amendment, L N D two four dash zero 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 five, please follow the word. Uh, city boardman is the advocate. And this request is to update the main street, both downtown and quote development plan, to remove. Reference to and drawings of. Both arterial, city developed, or turn, alternative, and end quote, as shown on page sixty-one and up to appendix A to reflect current chapter two point two. Commercial district of the B C in preparation of a project to redesign and reconstruct South Main Street. This is the first of at least two public hearings with the final hearing before the city council.
I would say you could probably, um, skip the rest of that, um, to the second page. About the exporte conflict bias or conflicts of interest statement.
Yeah. The conduct of testimony criteria. Remains the same. Uh, so now I ask, uh, members of planning commissions to disclose the exporte context bias or conflicts of interest. And please indicate the nature and extent of such, and whether you intend to participate in our joint hearing. From these hearings, too. Does anyone wish to challenge? Uh, planning commissioners in porty hour? Okay, hearing none. Uh, sit down. Are they?
Yeah, so, um. As I've said tonight, I think a couple of times, we're getting ready to start designing South Main Street, um, for a complete rebuild. And we had this plan, it was adopted in two thousand and one, good plan, lots of good ideas in it, still applicable, good, good policy, lots of good design. Um, with one kind of major exception. Uh, it, it envisions Main Street having a walking path down the middle of it. And, uh, it's just not a very safe alternative, um, ODOT doesn't much care for it. And, uh, so we decided to amend this document, because when we start designing it, we really have to comply with what our law says, and this is kind of, you know, this is kind of the guidance that we have. So we want to remove that. As I started going through the document, it was like, ooh, there might be just a couple other things to fix while we're doing it. So I, I'm reading street names, and I'm going Dilibah, Dilibah, I know that name, why do I know that name, it's like, oh, that's Tatone now. So, we, I struck Dilibah and replaced it with Tatone. Um, and then I got to appendix A and I went, ooh, that was like adopted in two thousand and three. Um, it's the commercial district, and so we want to update that as well, we just want to make it a little fresher. You know, the data in here is, is old, the numbers are old. Um, we're not gonna take the time to update that information, but, um, I think the design considerations, uh. When you, when you look at. How this is laid out with the roundabout, it was drawn from this plan. And when you look at what is proposed for the other side of. And when you look at what is proposed for the other side of Main Street, when those sixty four acres develop. That's this plan too. And the plan is not rock solid. It doesn't say you have to do this. It was adopted again as guidance. Um but um again, the the I think the philosophy in the plan is still good. The theory is still good. Um so we'll see as that property develops, what might come out of it. And certainly um just from good planning, we want streets to be clear intersections and don't want them off off count. Kilter or anything. Um we may not get three streets on the other side, but whatever streets we do get, we want them to align with either City Center Circle or with Kincaid or with Willifor. Um so uh the. The gentleman who's owned that property over there for many, many years has uh divided it and given it to two of his sons. And as we understand it, they have been trying to seek partners to develop that property. So we're hoping at some point in time to say, yay, something's coming. Um I don't know what that will be. I know what I I have a sense of some of the people they're talking to, the types of businesses they're looking for. Um all very, very positive, but again.
Right over here?
Yep, the other side, the other side of those trees. The trees along Main. So this is sixty four acres um is what this is really. Um set to give um kind of some guidance and influence into how that would design. So um you know, basically, if you flip through this and just kind of go by pages, um you know, I struck through the second page. Uh and the other thing I should think I should share. Is that I've not been able to put my fingers on on specifically the document that was adopted. I had a document in a binder. And so I reached out to both ODOT and the Department of Land Conservation Development and said, not by any chance, going back to two thousand and one, you guys have anything? And they sent me some things. Um and so I have a word version that is consistent with what's in here. But all of the drawings that I have that inform most of the pages, all of the drawings in here, I I literally only have from the PDF. That I found that we've put on the website and then from what the binder I have. So. We're kind of trying to pull parts and pieces together to even do the update. What I will share is that fax machine. Um or yeah, this 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 page two. We're proposing to delete that because I'm fairly certain that wasn't in the adopted version because it's dated, that the little fax date in here is after the fact. But what you should notice here is in this. This is the city hall. This is the development that has happened on this side. Um not exactly, but close. Um it shows the partialization that's happened over here. Um. You know, where the senior center is, it shows it. It's shown though that the senior center was proposed to be a lot closer to the street instead of further back. So it's a little bit different.
Basically, read the words and don't look at the picture.
Right.
That's gonna be hard to do.
So I'm proposing to delete that because it it actually came after the fact and it kind of got stuck into into the document. But otherwise, truly page sixty one is where we are um deleting the city developed alternative or making a few other changes to that page. And then on page sixty three, it's the same thing. We're proposing to delete the city developed. Um alternative, both of them have multi-use paths that kind of run down the middle of the road. And then um there's a couple of other type of graphical errors in here that we captured and then changing Dilibah to Tatone. Um and then again, um replacing the commercial, excuse me. The commercial district that starts on about a page a hundred and.
Just a quick question.
Are you going by the square page numbers or the the original printed numbers?
Not the square ones.
Yeah.
Okay, she could that's.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Either way. Because some of them are covered up.
Yes, they are. Oh, they may be, yes, yes.
Sixty three in the packet is based.
Three oh one.
Right, yeah, yeah, I got it, I got it.
Okay. Yes, I'm not looking at the same packet. So um what I'm proposing to replace uh under appendix A is actually item D on our agenda tonight. So we'll we'll talk a little bit more about that because when we conclude this, I want to get the most current version of the commercial district in here. So that that kind of concludes my staff report on this one. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Um I just think this is a great document. I really like it.
Question I had is in, I saw that the commercial residential streets are running at sixty eight. Is that what Main Street has also? Is it?
Sixty is is wider because it is an arterial.
Okay.
So. The other thing. Yeah, well, we'll see what it designs, whether we do on-street parking or not. We do have a lot of utilities out there. And and a lot of demand for utilities. It's this thing called data centers. They like to put a lot of fiber in the ground. I I don't get it. I mean, I don't understand, but um. A a lot of demand for space for utilities. And then we have to separate uh water and wastewater by so many feet. And then and then we have an undergrounding requirement for power. So when you went to electrics putting power, they they need to go in the ground as well. And so everything has to be separated by so much di- distance. Um and then fiber companies don't like to put one bundle next to the other bundle. They think them to be so many feet apart. And then if it's one fiber company and another fiber company, they're also looking for a separation of their of their bundles. So. Yeah, I think it's an eighty foot right away. It is an arterial. I I will share that. We have at least three or four places where we have standards for roads and every one of them is in conflict with the other one. So one of the objectives that we're working on as we work through all of these amendments is to eliminate as many of those conflicts as we can. And get to the point where the only place you will find the standard will be in our public works standards book. So. When we start talking about how wide is it supposed to be? Hard question to answer.
We don't really appease fiber optic people that don't want to be next to the competition and we and did two digits.
No. There are both sides of all our roots. Hit boy eggs one basket in.
There one trash, put it all in there. Yeah, no, I seen them. I seen them. But I mean, if they're if they're stayed in the hole. I don't, I I haven't, I would, that's a guy to to dig another one just because they don't want to be next to those guys. Oh, well, she was mentioning, different companies not one.
Right, even if it's the same company, they don't want to have one bundle next to the other.
Right.
And if it's different companies, they don't want to be next to either one of those. So. Yeah, it's just like I said, eighty feet will become not wide enough. And and then the depth will become an issue because it'll be, you know, something here. It it will be three D planning because we'll be planning for the width, the length, and the depth. Yeah. Anyway, back to the downtown development. I think I've covered everything I have. There's been no correspondence on this.
Well, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who's just speaking against the application? Any neutral testimony? The public testimony in the hearing is now closed. Uh that was a lot of information given that way. Uh and I skated through the pictures. I'm not gonna lie.
Well, this document is probably half pictures, if not more. So, yeah.
Yeah. Uh I'll be honest, that first that that picture uh the kind of the center of our plane, I didn't think it was a walk-in. Thought it was like a. Uh. It's like, yeah. Upplication.
Yeah, well, it's when you look at the standards where they've got it written out, the one on page sixty three and sixty five, sixty one, sixty, whatever the pages those are, yeah, sixty one and sixty three. And you look at how they're all labeled, it says walking path. So, yeah, some of the some of the drawings don't really reflect exactly what the.
Yeah, because I never seen that a long time ago.
Right, but if it was supposed to be like that one they did out of Stanfield, that turned into a just giant mess of weeds. So I don't think you would want that anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're talking about on three ninety five. It is just a mess of weeds, yeah.
I had no issues with questions. It was. Very straightforward, made sense to me. But any questions or? And will you discuss?
I do not have any questions or anything I need to give.
I like the pictures of the benches. Still.
Twenty-three years old, but still appropriate. Probably more expensive now.
All right, um I with no questions, I entertain a motion to. Uh recommend the plan amendment to the city council as presented.
I do recommend downtown development plan amendment, LND twenty four dash zero 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 five as many city council. I'll second.
Uh good motion and a second to recommend the amendment as presented to the city council. For LND two four dash zero 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 five. We.
Yes. Commissioner Layton?
Yes.
Commissioner Carberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Fong?
Yes.
Commission chair for Reese?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, uh final public hearing of the night. Public hearing on Boardman Development Code Amendment, LND two four dash zero 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 seven is called over. City boardman is the applicant. This is a request to update chapter two point two commercial of the BDC to remove standards related to. Bed and breakfast inns to add language to the use tables for both commercial and port, commercial highway sub-district. And to address minor housekeeping items. The applicable criteria for amendment of the BDC is found in chapter four point one point six hundred. Type four procedures. This is the first of at least two public hearings with the final hearing of the board and city council. Conduct, testimony, and criteria will remain the same as. Previous public hearings this evening. I asked the members of the planning commission to disclose any exporte context bias or conflicts of interest, which indicate the nature and extent of any exporte contact bias or conflict interest. And indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge a planning commissioners impartiality? Hearing done. Uh. Uh standard workforce on this.
Yeah, I'm just gonna jump into the draft language with this one like I did the last three and just jump in the last two as kind of jump in the documents. Um. I had a couple of things that have happened um in my time here that have just kind of caused me some angst with the commercial district. Um this doesn't fix all the problems, but it's kind of the first cut at fixing the ones that have maybe been the most um kind of in our face or. Would appear to be somewhat problematic with with kind of where we are and where we're headed. Um one of the first things that really threw me is somebody said, well, where's this tourist commercial district in your in your development code? And I'm like, we don't have a tourist commercial district. And they're like, well, it's on the map or no highway sub-district. I went, I looked on the map and I went, well, okay, there's highway sub-district on the map. It's not in the book. But in the book, it says tourist commercial and it's not on the map. I finally found somewhere that kind of told me one was the other and the other was that they were the same. So I tried to call that out in here so that where the tourist commercial is at, we're actually calling it tourist commercial or highway sub-district because it's confusing if you don't know. So eventually we need to pick one or the other and get the map and the and the code language the same, but. Maybe this will kind of get us through until we can actually do the work with both the map and the code language. So we've added that. Um in the in the first use table for just the commercial zone, so it's it's on the second page of the draft language. And I apologize, I don't have the packet. So I don't know what packet page number that is.
Four oh eight.
Four oh eight. Um. We have it allowed uh for bed and breakfast inns as a conditional use, but bed and breakfasts are generally done in a home. And in this particular case, homes are also allowed as a conditional use. And it's the commercial zone. We really don't want to be building single-family homes in our commercial district. We really want. Commercial businesses in our commercial district. That will be something that we need to further refine when we get into a bigger update of this, is how we. Kind of move those residential uses out of our commercial zone. Um so that's the second piece where we remove that. Um and then it's a couple of pages. Uh again, there was some typographical wrong use of that and then on um two pages after that. Um and then um. Under special standards for certain uses, um which is two point two point one seven oh relative to the sections. Um bed and breakfast inns are listed there. We scratched that and we scratched the 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 requirements or the of the standards for that. So again, that's still, you will still find that same language in our residential zone because that's where bed and breakfast in should be allowed would be in a residential zone. In a house, in a residential zone. We can get into what that means, but it's really not pertinent to this discussion. We're trying to move something that is a residential use out of the commercial, out of the commercial use zone district. Um. Some misspellings of a couple of words again as I move through here. Cannot is singular word. Cueing is misspelled in here. Um we fixed that. And then when we got to get to the table, the table for the tourist commercial sub-district, that is the sub-district right here at the interchange and. A couple of things uh stuck out. So again, we removed that same reference to bed and breakfast inns. Um. Under the commercial list, it did say auto-oriented and auto-dependent uses and facilities, including truck stops. But probably about a year, year and a half ago, maybe year, well, they're still around. So a year and a half ago, probably. We sat down with a group who was trying to buy the property right up here where you approved the hotel, the restaurant, and the RV resort. Prior to that, we were working with a group who wanted to put a truck stop there. Not a not a car, not not for cars to fuel, a full-blown truck stop. And we couldn't get there. We couldn't get them through all of the traffic requirements that they would have to meet based on the Main Street IMP. And so that's why I've scratched including and added the word excluding. We, this is just not the right interchange to put a truck stop on. If you want to do a truck stop, then then work with Mr. Devon at the property where the car block is. And put your truck stop in. That's a much more appropriate place or out at Tower Road where the loves is. There's enough space, but interchange is big enough to accommodate. The turning movements, you know, it's one thing in a commercial zone like this to get a truck in. That's gonna deliver goods to Family Dollar or Dollar General or to the grocery store, but that's that's a truck a day.
Yeah, we gotta control the traffic we have just from normal people, let alone another truck, a truck stop.
Right, so so that's that's the rationale behind going from including to excluding there. And then there's a couple of items that are allowed in the commercial zone. And the way to think about this table for this sub-district is this is a refinement of that list of uses. So if somebody were to come in and try to cite in the tourist commercial sub-district, this is the list that we would be looking at. And retail's not included, personal professional services aren't included. Um medical and other health-related clinics or emergency service facilities aren't included. So it's kind of like, we need to add a few things. Because those are the kinds of things that we would want in our tourist.
We know they already exist.
But remember, this further refines the list. So if somebody's citing in that area, I'm gonna look at this list for the allowed uses, not the commercial list. Yeah, it it narrows it. It more focuses it to things that you would want in a tourist tourist commercial area. Now, I'm also gonna say. That I think when we get to the point where we're really redoing our Duke Development Code and we're really having those conversations, there's a much bigger conversation to be had about uses in commercial zones. And do we really want that to be a tourist commercial zone? I mean, I think there's a whole policy conversation that we need to have. I'm just trying to do some quick fixes now to kind of address the shortcomings based on conversations we're having with people who want to do things in the zones. Like, gosh, I can authorize a retail use. And and tourist commercial is that whole strip along Northeast Front. That whole strip along Northeast Front is tourist commercial. So if somebody wanted to come in and approve a retail use currently, I'd have to look at the list and go. I don't have a real clear path to say yes to a retail use. And what do we really need in downtown Boardman? We need some retail uses.
And is that space or that that sub district is is defined as part of space or how far it goes that way, how far it goes that way?
Right, it's right at the interchange. So once you get to Oregon Trail. You're in just commercial. When you're south of Oregon Trail, it's a different, it's it's that first use zone. It's the commercial use. Um. When, well, and then when you go out to the Port Memorial Interchange, uh, that is a commercial district, but it's the, it's the service center district. It has its own list of things that are allowed. I don't remember. I think I made a change of two to get as well, but so those are the.
The reason I asked that question is because we we were hoping to at some point have a more solid name for it, whether it's tourist commercial or tourist. Yeah, tourist commercial sub district or highway sub district. Highway sub district to me makes all the sense in the world because it's so focused on by the highway. We leave that alone because other people would, well, where's the tourists? Is that down by the river? Is it over here? Is it over here? So if it's highway, that we we know that it's that.
Right.
After that, then name them, you know.
Right.
But if it's relative to the highway.
Right.
Makes more sense.
Yeah, I, yeah, and again, I thought one name in one place and a different name in the other place and it's really unclear what they are. So I I there, we need some clarity on that. Um, so anyways, that really is what's, those are the inputs into why I'm making the suggestions I'm making. Um, in here as well, where Dilva is is a holdover, it's an old section. Um, changing that to Taton where it's referenced in here. Um. There are some numbering issues that I identified in the service center, the sub district, but I did not make any changes to the uses. And that, that might be it. Though I think that concludes kind of the changes and that's the reasoning for them. So again, this is not a complete rewrite. This is really just a focus on the things that right now. The experience that I've had over the past two and a half years, these are the things that are causing problems that have kind of been in my base problems. And that's what I'm really trying to address. Yep. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Um, in both. Tourist commercial sub district and the commercial district.
Mm-hmm.
And the land is built there. In there, it's residential in both of those.
Yeah.
Why?
It's a really good question and um again, that's the piece that I think is the bigger policy discussion about removing that. It is, it is only allowed through a conditional use process. There are a couple of places where we, um. I I think it's easier to make the case for maybe multifamily as a as a transitional use. I think it's also worth having a conversation about mixed use, commercial on a bottom floor, residential on the top floor. Or floors, however that may be. I think that's where we need to go. I didn't want to take on that bigger policy discussion at this point in time, Zach. But believe me, that the fact that there is residential use is identified in this is of concern. I know that again, when you look, go back to the downtown development plan and you look at the proposal for the property on the other side. There is, there is a reference in there about a multifamily along the eastern border of that property from north to south. And to some degree, that makes sense because it creates a bor- a border or a boundary between the current residential uses that are along Anderson. And then the future fairly ho- hopefully fairly robust commercial district that will be there. And so that multifamily housing would create that, that barrier between those two kind of uses.
Yeah.
Um, but you know, one of the things we identified as we were going through our audit is that we allow mixed use. We have no standards for how we would allow mixed use. If somebody, we've had that, we had a phone call and. And somebody was saying, hey, I don't remember what the veterinarian or something like that. And we're thinking, oh, wait, that would be great. And then they're asking these questions about mixed use and. Then we just stumble over ourselves because we have no way to answer that question. Um, that's a bigger lift than I wanted to take in this minor update. But just so you're prepared, those are some of the conversations that we're gonna be having. Um, as we, as we continue to move through um all of these updates and changes.
Yeah, I didn't mean to push you aside.
No, 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 the the questions. They're really good questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One other question regarding the, the um. Stuff that we're now excluding since the truck stop. Was there ever a discussion to add to that, the truck repair that's that's still allowed underneath it where it says vehicle sales? Or is there any discussion about vehicle sales being being allowed in this? Was there ever? And the reason I ask is because I've always thought of of uh like going through Umatilla in the old, well, prior to them redoing their main thoroughfare. All of the little car sales places that they had stretched along there that would last for a year. Or whatever, and the majority of the cars that were in there, nobody wanted to buy. That's why they sat there. And. If it happens to be a new development area and and we got lucky and bought a a car dealership came here, it would be fairly good sized. And.
Right.
That's something we'd have to, we're gonna have to deal with down the road at some point, whether it's car sales or the truck repair, but if if we don't want truck stops. Then I would keep out the truck repair and keep them off of the, off of that, this area down here where all the traffic is already. And I always say that because if you go look at the shop out at Love, not saying that we'd have that kind of traffic here, but that truck stop repair shop of Love's back behind at the end of their property. Is one busy place.
Very busy.
I mean, they just, and they only have one building that they pull up in and out of six, five days or whatever it is, but it's busy.
Yeah. No, we haven't gotten into that level of detail. Um, I I don't disagree that the conversation is necessary. Um, you know, we're only gonna see, because of how the interchange area management plan is written and how we've. You know, somebody adopted that, that is our, that's our adopted law for how we're gonna manage this interchange going forward. Um, we're only gonna see more tightening of the ability to move anything of size through there. Um, so I think, I think as businesses, I will tell you what. When we were talking to that, to that group that was trying to do the truck stop. It wasn't us saying no that caused them to walk away. It was us saying, you have to figure out how you can comply with the main street interchange area management plan. And the more they looked at it, the more they knew they couldn't. And so I think it's the same thing with any business that would come in and would create significant truck traffic. It's like, oh, this is what you're gonna have to comply with.
Right.
And and this is where your limitations are gonna be. We're not, I, I, I am, um. I'm an odd kind of planner. Because I have a really strong sense of private property rights. And I I get really hesitant when we start saying, well, you can't do this and you can't do that and you can't do this and you can't do that. So I really try to balance that against. What's right for the community and somewhere in there you find that that space in the middle. And it works, but I think some of that is saying this is what's required.
Right.
If you can figure out how to do this. And meet the standards, we'll have a conversation about whether or not it's allowed or not, you know, eh, so again. Think of it this way, Mike. It's not about whether or not we're saying yes or no. It's about we're asking them to show us how they're going to do it.
Sure.
So I think we're better off to have more opportunity. Because again, I think capitalism works and we live in a free market economy. So I think having more alternatives and more opportunities is the right way to go. But they have to figure out how to meet the basic standards that we do have.
True.
Main Street, the big one is the I A M P. That is the biggest thing. That is gonna drive how people are gonna develop on that property.
And I I wouldn't, I would never ask for anything to to take away from private property rights. Because I don't think we have enough of them in anyway.
Right.
Just there's if, because we only, we're limited, we don't have a lot of space there. We're we're limited into what we can allow. So and and there's plenty of room to to put all of those businesses in an area that doesn't affect that immediate thing. You know, and uh trucks is one of them, but again, the auto sales thing, I just, I go back to Umatilla again. And all of the businesses that are closed at one time or another had a used car sales lot there every time.
Well, and most of those used car lot sales are on the lot where you, an old gas station was.
Exactly, yeah.
Before Interstate eighty-two.
Right.
There were no fewer than fifteen gas stations in Umatilla.
And they, and they've all been a used car lot at one point or another.
Since then, yeah. Yeah, so any other questions on this? On the proposed changes? Again, there's a lot more work to do. I'm really just trying to hit the things that have been the problems. Or the limitations based on conversations we've been having with potential developers.
Lot of hard work, holy, holy. I thought my job was hard.
That's what I said, what I said to you today. You're just, you don't want to do it.
Yeah, people like Stephanie and Nancy and I, we just kind of, you know, kind of live on this stuff, so I say.
You know that Todd on sign up.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Just checking.
Yeah. I'm a policy won.
I mean, we appreciate it. We need it, obviously, still.
It's a little weird, I know. Yeah.
Gonna have a certain love for the community.
Sure.
I think.
And documents.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, the documents.
Yeah.
Well. Oh, does there any um correspondence on that?
No, none. I, you know, and I'm really surprised. We noticed every owner of commercial property. Importment, because we're required to by law. So sixty, sixty-seven landowners. Um, received notice for this hearing and they just noticed, just went out for the city council hearing that'll happen on August sixth. Not a single inquiry.
That's amazing.
You did.
Did you send it to Jack? Since I don't own the property, but I didn't get.
Well, we go to the property owner.
Okay, that's why.
But but there's also a statement on that. There's such the forwarded to the renter or the tenant, so.
Okay, getting forwarded to me.
Well, I think you're getting information here.
Right, okay.
Yeah, he must know that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, uh, well, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wish to speak against the application? A neutral testimony. Okay, the public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Uh, well, we should probably make a motion of something about your recommend.
I'd have to recommend the development code amendment L N D, L N D twenty-four dash zero 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 seven is presented to the city council. As a minute.
Well, no, we're not. Are you proposing an amendment? Or the amendments as presented?
As presented to be amended, right, because they're being amended.
I just want to mention, we're not asking for additional amendments.
No, as it presented to be amended, because they wanted to.
Yeah.
To send us.
Yes.
Okay.
I say.
Okay, uh, sweet motion and a second to recommend uh B D C amendment L N D two four dash zero 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 seven. As presented to the city council.
Commissioner Layton?
Yes.
Commissioner Carberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Farnol?
Yes.
Commission Chair for Reese?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That was your last one. Right, I like starting at six.
Yeah.
All right, um. Oh, play an official report.
There was, there's a one sheet in there that has, it's just a table and it kind of shows committive any issue for the first six months of this year. Um, you know what page that is?
Four twenty-seven.
Four twenty-seven. Yeah, we've been busy. And and next month, you'll see July and then an annual total. And then the month after that, you'll see August and you'll see an annual total. So and and but we're gonna continue to add to that. We're gonna add um some, just some text in there that you'll see every month about kind of some of the other stuff going on. Um, we'll, we'll talk um in those updates about things like we just did tonight, what's what's coming. Um, and then we're, we're initiating this big kickoff. We're gonna be, we're working on just a whole slew of updates to planning documents. That we're kicking off here um over the next. We're kicking them off over the next couple of months and now we're gonna be really busy for the next two years. So we'll try to memorialize what's happening in kind of a monthly planning director report. It'll come to you guys initially and then it'll, it'll follow up and go to the council each month. So um, we're building that. It's been taking us a while to get organized. It's gonna be nice having a another planner on staff to kind of further in inform that.
Will these all come through with their website or online?
Citizen serve, yeah.
They work.
We're working through the portal. So we're through the portal. Um, it's been a transition for a lot of people. So what I tried to do is uh set them up with an appointment and help guide them through the portal. That with the next time they come and and submit an application, it's a lot easier. So we have, we do have some people that say, hey, you know, it's, it's a little difficult for me. The moment they're sitting with me and have an appointment and really get the hang of it, they say, you know what, this is so much easier because I can just go in. In the evening when I'm out, out of work and and resting at home and check on my application. And I don't have to wait or take today off to go into city hall. So I think it's efficient and I think it is working well. And the month of July, we're just at day eighteen and we've been extremely busy. And all the applications have been through Citizen Serve, so it's, it definitely helps. It definitely helps.
What was that?
I would have liked to have had that meeting she's talking about because I think I was the first one.
You were one of the first.
Number one, yeah, and uh we, it was, there's a few things, payment for the payment of the permit.
No, so it wasn't a meeting, so it's, if somebody has an application that they want to submit.
Right, yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, the the one on one.
Kind of orientation is to help.
Yeah, yeah, just kind of help.
Yeah, we kind of just flung our way through it.
We got there.
It slowed me down.
Yeah, so um, we didn't, we started, we didn't finish the conversation, so maybe in the morning, but we've got um. Thirteen new homes that we need to approve here.
This week.
Just this week.
Good deal.
So um, River Ridge continues to build. Um, we've just recently met with them. They're gonna start construction to on their next phase um with infrastructure and the park. And then they will uh start building those homes. Uh, that, that, that phase has about fifty lots in it, if I remember. Um. Tuscani kind of stopped building and the original builder sold the last forty lots to Promate Homes. Their company out of the Tri-Cities. Took them a while to get all of their C C Bs in Oregon, but they got that all figured out and now they are. I don't, we're we're being thirteen and I think prior to that, we've approved six or eight already.
They are at the right in the middle of this going on.
Yeah.
It's right. It shocks me how fast they're putting these up and it concerns me because they're. I don't know, I love you, River Ridge, and very, very, they just did things about there. Yeah, well, it's just not, I don't know who is supposed to be. I don't know, I think it was, it's, they're doing things very fast and very, very shortcuts.
So although, although they're doing things quickly, we are checking every single application. So we, although we're getting thirteen applications. I print every single application, every single site plan, every single elevation and check every single setback. And site design, so there, there's no shortcuts that they can take as in the.
She's uh, she's talking more on the inspection side, but when she moved into her first home on on uh Eagle.
Drive, yeah.
Eagle Drive, she was like the third house done.
There was a second house done.
Yeah, and and I I did work for her and her house was built well. There wasn't any separation, no settling, none of that stuff. And but as you went through those homes, as they continued to build and you go around to the other sections of it down different streets. It is a, it's a, it's a market improve or it's a market, you can tell that they were tired of building homes or those homes. Whatever it was, you could, the the workmanship that I have to go back and repair now is totally different than what it was when she built her own.
I bought my daughter and I bought hers.
Yeah, I didn't, we didn't have to do anything over there except for what she wanted hung here, hung there. Everywhere else we're doing repairs that that you would think, why? Why aren't, call the builder back, call the builder back. And I don't know if they intimidated, got intimidated or what, none of them want to. And I'm like, you haven't owned the house very long. Now I'm not talking about you.
Well, I know, but my other house, we did.
Yeah.
They are not. They are not, I can't easy to work with.
Yeah, it just seems like they, they're, they're.
It's gonna settle for the next five years.
And that's a discussion that we've had out there multiple times about, that same guy building a whole bunch of them, it's like when you get down here to the last ones. There's no comparison to how the first ones were built, I mean.
They sold, Tuscani sold all of that and then the one person that came in and they're, they're, I think there's. Let's say thirteen right now, they're going up one high street, next to me, two on one side, two on this side, four right here, two more over here. I mean, they're just going up so fast and they all look identical. Actually, they don't, they do not, and Stephanie and I had this discussion. No, they're very different, so the floor plans are different, the homes are different. So, and so, I mean, off the top of my head, I can't give you all the details of each individual home, but when you look at the plans, they're different.
Yeah, you can see them as a finished product to see the differences, I mean visually.
Because right now, they all have the same, because they all, they're all right now in the um. Yeah, it's exact, they look like they're just based on them. Yeah, and, and that's what it's gonna look like until you really know what was put into the home, because when you see that floor plan, which. We do have the ability to see the floor plan when it's uploaded through the system, they're different.
Well, I'll say yours absolutely completely different than anybody's on that street or on Anthony or on Rome. I haven't seen one that. That looks like yours?
You might see them in the exterior kind of.
On the outside, they look the same, on the inside, they don't, is that living dust, Kenny?
Yeah.
And my house was completely different than the house that was right next to me, that looked identical on the outside.
I mean, just being on the inside.
Yeah.
The inside of your location, I've never seen another like.
So, so they do all, they all, I mean, so.
I guess I get that bad case in my mouth because of what I experienced over there.
Yeah.
Now this is happening again, I moved, you know, to another neighborhood, it feels like, oh my gosh, they're doing the same thing again.
So the steps that it goes to, it goes to planning review and then it goes to utility review. And that's where we collect the SDCs and we, we authorize the connections to the water and the sewer. Which the developer has put in when they, before they built the street, as, as they were building the street, and then it goes to the building program. It's really kind of um. You know, we do have a second inspector now, um, so it's Ben Glenn as kind of the solo. Um, he's had help on the plumbing side with a part-time plumbing inspector, but Jose, who's. And turn on his speaker if he wants to join the discussion, um. He's a building inspector now, so he's actually going out there and looking at those homes.
That will help a ton.
You know, Jose just graduated from a program and, and, and Glenn has mentioned to me on a couple of occasions that. Jose's gonna be tougher than he is, and that's probably gonna be a good thing.
I hope so, I really do.
Happy overwhelmed.
Yeah, well, and, and I don't say that to say that Glenn wasn't doing his job. But there was a question, well, there was a question one day about something is supposed to be every eighteen inches. And it was every twenty-four inches and Glenn has enough experience in the industry to know that every twenty-four inches is still structurally sound. But the code actually requires every eighteen inches, I, I, and I may have those distances wrong and, and I don't know what the specifics of it was. Jose's gonna require me to put him in every eighteen inches. So i- it's gonna be, it's gonna be an interesting um transition, I think, for the builders out there. I, I know that when we went from it being, you know, Brett Cook was the building official for many, many years here and then it was Glenn and there was a transition for people. I was at the county with Glenn, uh, when um Glenn came on board and it was like, this is gonna be different. It's just gonna be different, he, he's gonna look at things differently, that doesn't mean better or worse, it just means differently.
Well, I wonder if the first development may have been under the previous, that she was talking about may have been.
No Brett, no. But he was also had, he, they had fifteen homes going up at the same time. Yeah, he's a busy man, no, no inspector in orbit has ever been as busy as the one's now. And Jose can only get there, not fast enough, let's go. And I don't think structurally, we're talking about these houses being bad, being built bad, but there is, there is noticeable things that I didn't call for that, that I didn't see to begin with. In, in the earlier stages of the homes and uh, it just, it just, it almost seems like we're tired of building these homes in orbit and let's go somewhere else and build them. The exact same one, let's go to a different town, we're tired of hanging out here, that's almost how I feel about it, like we hurried up. Few more nails are showing through the raptors that you didn't see before on the other ones.
Get through to your roof or the, what's that called, the?
Let's hope that things get better as we go.
I, yeah, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that this will be different than how Woodhill Homes finished and it will continue to stay.
And we're growing communities, so we're gonna see a lot of activity. I don't, I don't think that that's gonna end anytime soon, the more manpower we have.
I never saw that with any of those or the, the duplexes on, on uh.
Is that Mount Hood or Mount?
Those are all identical and they're all, there's, I didn't have any of those issues at all, anywhere, and rolling it the same way, just seemed like that one group up there. Up on the other side of there, they just kind of. Let's hurry up and get out of here.
Yeah. So the other part of the planning official report um that I wanted to space on is the last piece in your packet and it's the. This is out of the municipal code, okay, so this is not out of the development code, this is out of the municipal code. Um, and this session was, I think, I don't know when this was, this might have, I don't think this was in the original municipal code. But this certainly goes back to something that was adopted um. A number of years ago, it does look like there was an update to this in two thousand and four, but otherwise it hasn't been updated since then. And you'll notice that there are a number of things in here that I am suggesting to amend. Um, and most of it is because it's just not either consistent with current practice or it's not consistent with state law. Um, and that's really what's driving um the changes, so um. We really don't want the mayor or the city engineer to be um ex officio non-voting members, mostly the mayor. Because he's, he's the head of the council and that is your appeal body, so you know, we don't want to see that, that conflict there. Um, it's also just not general practice, um, the city engineer, um, I don't even know where that came from. There's no promulgation in the, in the, in the code for a city engineer specifically. Under the election of officers, um, we do that uh at the first meeting each year. And we don't elect a president and vice president, we elect a chair and a vice chair, um, and it is a. Um, chair who shall be members appointed by the council and who, who shall hold the office during that year at the pleasure of the commission. So um, a couple of changes there, we don't have a secretary, uh, staff functions in that role. Um, the quorum, the rules and regulations, the meeting times, a couple of changes there. Um, some of those are just uh grammatical changes as well, um, you can't call a special meeting. Um, particularly not in three days, we have a nose requirement that, that, that would conflict with. Um, if we ever found that we needed to meet more often than once a month, we'd let you know, I mean, we, we work with you to figure that out. Um. We do want a way to remove members, members who just stopped coming, um, those types of things, we want that opportunity. Um, so really you have to be absent for three consecutive meetings or fifty percent of meetings in any six-month period. And again, that is an unexcused absence, if you call us and say, hey, I'm homesick, I'm not coming, that doesn't count against you. So if you can't make a meeting, it's just, you know, let us know, I mean, like tonight, it was like, oh, we're gonna have four. You know, we knew David wouldn't be here and then right they called and she was sick and then, and then Sam emailed me and said, I'm out of fire and it's like. Okay, I gotta make sure the, the four are gonna be here, hence you all got a phone call, so um. Yeah, um, there, uh, the membership restrictions. Are kind of a statutory thing, we left those, um, employment as staff is much more um. Formal today than it was when this was originally written, so we um updated that a little bit and then the powers of the commission. Um, we made some changes there. Um. Yeah, so I, I wanted you guys to see this, um, this, this will go to the council. Um, maybe it won't happen in August, maybe September or October, um, this will end up in front of the city council. Um, and we'll adopt it as changes to the municipal code, so the municipal code is different than the development code. Um, you guys implement and make decisions based on the development code. The municipal code is really kind of what got, how we, it, it's what governs the city, it's how, it tells us how we do stuff. Yep.
So I have a quick question regarding that, maybe I, I shouldn't even bring it up, but I, I really feel like I need to because it's, it affects me directly. Or I'm directly involved with it, I do work for um people that have been in here before, not at that time while they were here. And obviously, if, if it was ongoing or if my decision up here made any difference in what they were doing. I would, I would remove myself from even thinking about voting, but I have done work for them before and I would hate for, I don't want it to come back as, as being uh.
Partial.
If, yeah, this had anything to do with the other, um, but, because on the restrictions here, it makes it pretty clear that. Like two, two voting members can't be engaged in buying, selling, or they, no more than two, right? Or that kind of, that kind of relationship with this whole program, the whole, the whole thing. And um, just, just for, I guess transparency, I do deal with them. I, I work with them as a business and, but not, I would never do it when they're sitting here looking for approval.
Right, so, so. So let's say. Part of what that's getting to is if, let's say Leslie Pearson was appointed to the planning commission and then um. Lee Dawkins was appointed to the planning commission, we could then come along and appoint Pam Dawkins to the planning commission. Because we then have three real estate agents on the planning commission and real estate agents, I will just tell you, are problematic to have upon commissions. Um, not because of who they are, but because of what they do and they regularly find themselves conflicted out. Of being able to sit on the dais and make a decision because, because they sold, they're in the process of selling the property to Joe who's doing the subdivision. Or they're representing, gonna represent Joe and selling the property after the subdivision is completed, so it creates that, that, that conflict of interest. And they, they will make money from that, you know, they're gonna make their commission, I would say that in most situations. If you've done previous work for somebody and they happen to be in here to get a variance for their fence height. Um, unless they have contracted you to put that fence in, you're fine.
Correct, right, so long as I understand when I need to step away because of the possibility.
And, and sometimes it's not so much you need to step away, it's just that you need to tell people.
Right.
Hey, I, I've done, I've done significant work for this, for this landowner, um, this is the role that I play, you know. And if that ever, for any of you, if that ever comes up, just come in and talk to me before the, the hearing.
Right.
You know, give me a call, come by the office, we can kind of talk through what you perceive the conflict to be. And we can make an determination that it is or isn't and, and.
And I haven't had that situation yet.
It can be.
Yeah.
Um, but in a situation like this, we would still need you to function as a commissioner and issue your vote.
Absolutely.
And, and there's provisions to allow you to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, cool, I just wanna get that out there.
So I don't need so much as a motion on this, but I would really like your consensus on it, that you're, you're good with this. I wanna see this kind of move forward, um, if you've got any additional thoughts or concerns.
The part that we, you took out on um two sixteen one hundred power commission. That gets out because this normally the planning commission doesn't have that authority, is that why it's been um redacted? Process, the, the commission shot, control the subdivision of land and made, made reputation to the city council that whole um part of the paragraph.
Yeah, so um, I think there's a difference, uh, um. So you, your role is in, so in the role of, of a quasi judicial action. So let's go back to the Silver Garden Hotel complex, so your role there is to apply the law. So. The uses that were proposed, two were allowed outright and one was a similar use determination. Which but for it coming before you, the code actually allows the city manager and by virtue of the planning director or planning official. To make that similar use determination, somebody comes in and, and let's say it's a use allowed outright, we're simply doing a developer review. We did this recently for a food pot, a, a food truck. Um, we don't have an allowance for food trucks, but we do have an allowance in the zone for a restaurant. And so we made a staff level determination that a food truck is similar to a restaurant. And so therefore we allowed it in the zone where a restaurant would have been allowed and we made that similar use determination. The code allows that to be done, the reason we put the, the other one in front of the planning commission is because it was a hole. And you got to make um decisions around the hotel and the rest, and the restaurant. Now, to be clear, you don't have the authority to say no to a use that is allowed outright. But you can influence how it's done, those are the standards, the landscaping standard, maybe where the road might be. But you know, those things about how it's done is in your purview, so um. I went and looked at powers of commission someplace and read it and pulled from it. I couldn't tell you exactly where, because I did this probably two, three months ago, um. And I borrowed and I don't remember if I borrowed that from, I may have borrowed this from, I may have taken this from statute, there's some language in statute. That I may have drawn this from. Yeah. Yeah.
And I just don't have enough background or experience, it just seems like it's taken a lot, you know, it's, it's obviously it takes. More responsibility and has a factor planning and team management. Um, because I understand that if uh, somebody had applied for a certain type of permit and that permit's already been, um, you know. That's already like, they didn't wanna do a commercial, in a commercial zone, and guess that we can't say no, because that's already what it's done.
Right.
But if they're coming in asking, Katie, we want an exception on this, you know, for.
Right, well, and again, if, if so, so let's go back to the barbed wire on the fence or the height of a fence. So that's a conditional use permit for the barbed wire, it's a variance for the height of the fence and those things do, depending on the, the level. It may be a conditional use permit is a type three, it would come in front of the planning commission, a variance, there's two levels of variances. Um, the more minor level of variances is a type two, we provide notice to be joining, um, adjoining landowners. And then we issue the decision based on comments, if there's no comments, we issue the decision as requested. Um, a more significant variance, like the fence height at the regional youth facility, that required type three review. Which is a quasi judicial decision in front of this body, so, so when we start talking about the dividing of land. The code also delineates and I'm, I'm not gonna get the, the spacing right, but for a land partition. That's a type two decision, so we're issuing notice to be joining property owners and then we're issuing a decision based on comments. For a subdivision, and I, I think it's for any subdivision, it, it's a, it's a type three and it comes before the planning commission. So there are, there are. I guess it's a hierarchy of decisions and the further up the hierarchy you go, it has to do with discretion. So when we're approving a house, um, that's a type one decision, if you're building a house in a residential zone. Right. Did you meet the setbacks, what should, can you meet the design standards, if, if you can check the right boxes, we, we issue the permit and off you go and build your house. But when, but when you can't, or you want to do something that's not authorized. Then we review that and it's like, okay, so what are the changes that we're looking at? And is this a variance, is this a, you know, where does it fit? Where does it fit into all the other aspects that we have of the ability to have that conversation about how to accomplish what you're asking for? I, I think that's one of the difficulties sometimes when you're working in a counter in a planning office. It's because the folks that come into the, to the counter and I, I encounter this all the time at the county. Well, I wanna do this on my property and fill in this with whatever, they, they never told you what they really wanted to do. They told you what they thought you would say yes to. And then if you have the conversation, you would begin, and, and as you could build a little trust and rapport with the person at the counter. They would go, well, we'd really kind of like to do this. You would begin, and and as you could build a little trust and rapport with the person at the counter, they would go, well, we'd really kind of like to do this. And they give you a little hint of what they're really thinking, they wouldn't give it all away, but they give you a little hint. And then you would say, well, okay, well, we can, we can see how we can make that work, and then. You finally, you finally get to the point where it's like, well, really what we wanna do is that. You know, this has become that and it's really different, but at least now you know what they're want, and now you can figure out how to work with them to get there. So a really good example of this is in the county, we've got several hunting preserves. Um, bird hunting and in one case, big game hunting, and. The land use framework for hunting preserves. Has gone through several reiterations over time, over the past thirty years at the state level. Didn't have to have land use, didn't have to have land use, couldn't do other things, could do other things. And they just assumed that because they had this permit from the the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, they could do anything they wanted. So we've got lodges out there and they have kitchens and they they host other events. And pretty soon it became clear that no, your department of fish and wildlife permit didn't authorize you to have a lodge. It didn't authorize you to house twenty-five people, it didn't authorize you to have weddings on the property. Um, and and then add whatever else to that, and so. We worked with several of those facilities over time, and I know there was just recently another amendment to one of those, um, that I saw go through the county staff. Where we use the conditional use permit authorizations in the, in this county's zoning ordinance. For one of them, we authorized it as a private park, we authorized, um, the, um, basically a bed and breakfast for their, for their lodge. Um, we approved a commercial kitchen so they could serve meals, and when you have a bed and breakfast approval, you can only buy a lot of sort of breakfast. But these folks were making baked lunches and. And um, serving dinners and and holding corporate events and doing all kinds of other things. So for one of them, we found a way to approve it so they could have a commercial kitchen, so they could offer meals beyond just breakfast. So it was a really, it was a really intricate process of figuring out how to pull from here and how to pull from there. And and approve that kind of suite of things to get them to the point where they can do what they wanted to do. But that's the conversation that you have, you have to work, work through and get to that point. And then you have to figure out how to have that conversation in front of the planning commission about, okay, so we've got this. And in in this case, we really were dealing with code enforcement violations, and how do we get these, these. And then you have to balance that against the economic benefit, who wants the county to close down Rugs Ranch? Nobody, nobody. Um, but from the perspective of number of rooms, in fact, I think that's the, the decision I saw lately, they're actually adding rooms to Rugs Ranch. It's like, whoa, okay, I don't know how they're gonna get there, but go for it, I'm all for that, it's an economic driver. It's a real important economic driver to South Laurel County, but it's, it's a matter of figuring out how to make all, how that, I don't know.
And this, this, you're not asking for a whole bunch of change here, rather than, it seems to be more definition as to what we. What our powers are. Clearer on that bigger paragraph than than, that's, cause that's pretty blatant, or just a flat statement up above. And it looks to me like you just got a little more detailed with it, so that it's more understandable.
I'm hoping so, that was certainly my intent.
We take away, or give us a lot of powers and take away a bunch of powers, so much as define better what we already have, so that it's certain areas are clear.
That would be my intent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm gonna have a bed, breakfast, lunch and dinner in. I didn't, anyone believe that something.
A- actually, that limitation for bed and breakfast to only serve breakfast, that's not a land use regulation, that's a state health regulation.
And it makes sense, I mean.
Yes.
Food is food. You're gonna prepare at the same darn place.
It has to do, it has to do with how they, the same thing with the difference between a bed and breakfast and an inn. So when you have a bed and breakfast up to. I don't know if it depends if I rooms or number of guests, but whatever, I don't remember the specifics, but when you go higher than that. You also change the requirements for um health and safety, a fire and safety relative to. Um, ingress and egress and fire response and and some of those other things about, you know, if there's a fire, how do you get out? Does it have to be sprinkled, so there's this, you can do a bed and breakfast usually in a traditional residential home, but when you shift and you start and you get higher than that number. You're now an inn and you have to meet other standards, we would allow a bed and breakfast in a, in a, in a residential zone. We would not allow an inn in a residential zone. That would be in a commercial zone, yes, yeah.
Alright.
Will, how else we got, uh, public comment? We're gonna invite our three guests.
I think he's sleeping on the other end.
Will, you know. It is a good job. Uh, yeah, so that's meeting August fifteenth.
Yeah, I don't think we have, have we received anything that would be an action item?
So maybe September nineteenth.
No, we, so but those thirteen per minute are type ones, and we'd have to have something by tomorrow. In order to have enough time, five, the five weeks, so it's, yeah, so no August meeting.
So I would say, this is what I would offer for the August meeting, because it is August, we can tentatively cancel it, if something should come in, we'll. We'll keep it on the agenda, but again, by tomorrow, actually, today would have been the deadline.
Today, oh, that's right.
I've not received anything, what I would say. Here's what I will offer, if you're interested, it is August, and if you wanna take August off, it's, it's hot, it's summer, maybe you wanna, you know, have a fun time. Um, if not, if there's some training you wanna do, we could certainly do some training. Um, you know, take that evening and spend an hour and a half and and. Make a topic and 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 do a deep dive, um, we could take you by then, we'll have a pretty good idea. Of where we're heading with all of these updates that we're doing, we could, we could just have a, just a work session around kind of where we're gonna head and the work that's gonna be coming your way in the next. Two years. Um, we will, we've, I, you've kind of, I've kind of touched on that, but we really haven't talked about it in any depth, so.
I feel like such a novice sometimes, so I'm starting to want to open. Training, any extra information, any of that kind of stuff.
Okay, well, let's keep it on the agenda, let's do some training, um, we'll brainstorm some ideas, um.
Let's build some trust and give them zip line.
You go first.
No problem, zip line, no problem, I'm not gonna stand up there and fall backwards and expect you to have attention. Oh, you guys, maybe you might.
Okay, so training it is. Um, my focus is probably gonna be on just kind of maybe a really good summary and conversation about all the work that is coming. Um, because it's really starting to come together, we've selected a contractor for a project. We know who the contractor most likely is gonna be, well, we've selected contractors for two projects. We know, have a pretty good idea of, oh, and we've got the contractor for the TSB update. And we will probably by the first of August know who the contractor for our fourth project will be. And I will feel much more comfortable about exposing those projects and those contractors in August. So we can certainly talk about where we're at with all of those conversations and what's happening, so I'll be able to kind of lay that plan out. Um.
What's the power, battery powered survey equipment that was on the corner out here today? It connected to a battery and there's nobody around.
I have no idea, I saw that too.
Data or, are we asked, did somebody ask for a report of something over there? Just sitting there, and I saw another one somewhere else, but it didn't have a battery and there was a guy standing next to it.
I have no idea, I saw that too, I was like, huh, who's doing the survey right here?
And what are they surveying?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, good question.
Maybe the traffic.
I just knew you'd have the answer for that.
I had the same question, but I I didn't get the answer, so, yeah, sorry.
Go and hook the battery, see who shows up.
There you go, there you go, yeah, um, okay, training it is, August fifteenth. Six P M, that's a Thursday, six P M, so how you guys liking the new day and the new time, it's only been once, but.
Yeah, Thursday's worked really good for me too, so, I'm less thinking on the day, the time, nice.
I'm not, what can I sleep?
I had to get up cooler.